You don't? I'm special. I'm special, sorry. I know, but they won't. He told me I'm the only one that's gonna have this. We can talk to Tom Chee. All right.
Okay. Okay, it's 5:29, so we need to start getting ready the chambers. I'm hoping everyone who's in there can hear me.
Hold on, we'll get it. Hold on.
We'll get you together, get you together there, Frank.
Give us a second.
I'm gonna have a hard time with that mask.
Sorry. All right, there we go.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure, there's a lot of background noise, wanted to make sure I was hearing everything. And for members in the council chambers, if you could... Since I'm chairing the meeting and you can't, I can't see you very closely, we're gonna have to be a little patient when it comes to being recognized tonight, okay? That being said, the hour of 5:30 having arrived, I call this committee of the whole to order and ask you all to rise with me and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Clark, can you please call the rules?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, a quorum is present.
Thank you very much. I will accept a motion for approval of the Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. We do not have any presentations tonight, so we will move on to... Our presentations are coming, just later. We're going to move on to ordinances tabled or remaining committee. Clark, can you please read those?
Yes. 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-430, 2020-067, 2020-153, 2020-207, 2020-273, 2020-315, 2020-346, 2020-378, 2020-379, 2020-380, 2020-404, 2020-406, 2020-464, 2020-538.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any action they would like to take on any of these ordinances? I'm going, I don't hear anything. I'm assuming no one in the chambers has anything to say, so we will move on to ordinances before the committees for consideration tonight. Clark, can you start with CWLP?
Yes.
Thank you.
2021-001, an ordinance authorizing a three-year contract extension and additional funding in an amount of $5 million under contract number UE18-09-48 for the purchase and delivery of limestone for Dahman Power Plant scrubbers with Central Stone Company for a total amount payable not to exceed $13,500,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
So moved for consent.
Second, Madam Chair.
Moved in seconded for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2021-002, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UE21-11-47, general maintenance and repair at generating facility with Henson Robinson Company from March 1st, 2021 to February 28th, 2024 in an amount not to exceed $2,600,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Moved in seconded for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2021-003, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for engineering services, proposed relocation or replacement of the CWLP water purification plants, process, waste ponds in an amount not to exceed $595,162 and authorizing the use of the environmental and regulatory initiatives and rebate fund, the ERIRF, for said project for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for debate.
Second.
Second.
Moved in seconded for debate, is there any discussion?
Yes ma'am. Alderman Redpath.
I'm sorry, which, which, who was that?
Number one.
Redpath.
Uh, yes, Alderman Redpath.
Yes, Director, if you would. Was this, was this contract bid?
This is on the ongoing work that we've had along with the ash ponds and the lime ponds. They're kind of intricate because the lime, the existing lime ponds are on the ash ponds right now. And Hanson is doing the work for the ash ponds that are, some of the preliminary work. So they're going to this right now for these services as well.
So was it bid?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? I'm sorry, Doug, you went back to your chair too quickly. Thank you. I see that this is expected to be completed within two and a half years. Are we going to be getting regular updates on the status of, of this study? I know this issue is, is a really hot topic for a lot of people, so...
It's not really a study, this is the engineering design work.
Sorry, the engineering design work.
Right. So basically, the efforts from this will produce, you know, design documents and construction documents that we would bid for the actual, the work to be performed.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Real quick, and I guess this is more for corporate counsel, are, is there, are we still under litigation on our ash ponds? And how much can we even discuss about this out in open session?
Okay, sorry. There is still pending litigation before the Pollution Control Board relating to this from a claim relating to the, relating to the ash ponds. It is my understanding that this relates to plans, potential plans to address next steps with the ash ponds. I don't think entering into just a discussion or about the contract to look at what the options are for a future, you know, addressing them really is a problem with the litigation. I would not want to go beyond or speculate about how this impacts it or things like that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't get out of our...
You may recall, that's the Sierra Club and some others that have objected, of which the ash pond litigation before the Pollution Control Board has been kind of sitting there. There are motions for summary judgment. Part of that got modified because they changed the state law. So we're still not sure how all of that is actually going to impact that, impact that.
Thank you.
So, and thank you for that, Alderman Hanauer. Doug, I guess that kind of segues back to my, my first point, which is, will this study, will the, the changing or the not-quite-completed regulatory situation around the ponds, how much of an impact will that have on this design? And are we going to be updated if things change that we need to modify these plans?
So with this, we're, we're gonna be relocating the lime ponds out of the ash pond area itself.
Okay, so no matter what, that will happen?
Right, it's, they're going about 300 feet north, kind of northeast. So, so that's the first step. We have to get those relocated. And then we can focus on, once, once the Illinois rule is final in front of the Illinois Pollution Control Board, and once it's implemented by the Illinois EPA, then we'll kind of know how, you know, in what manner we would be closing the ash ponds at that point per the Illinois regs. I mean, we're still following the federal guidelines for the combustion, the coal combustion residual rule, the CCR rule. So in this regard, the first step is basically to, you know, have them complete the design of the relocation of the lime ponds, get that out for bids, and then, and then construct them.
Okay, thank you.
So probably your next update would probably be us bringing back really the construction documents or the proposals to award for a contractor to, to do the work more, more than likely.
I look forward to that, thank you. Are there no other questions on this? We have a motion for debate, motion in the second. Seeing no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, moving on.
2021-004, an ordinance authorizing relocation of existing budget authority for fiscal year 2021 for the amount not to exceed $11,500,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to debate.
Second.
Moved in seconded for debate. Is there any discussion on this tonight? Seeing none? All those in favor vote aye? Those opposed, vote nay.
Aye.
Aye.
No nays, all right, the ayes have it for debate, thank you.
Public Works, 2021-005, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for purchase between the city of Springfield and Robert E. Seidner Jr. and Deborah Seidner for the purchase of real estate located at 709 Barrett Street in an amount of $278,000 in closing costs and an amount of $4,000 for a total amount not to exceed $282,000 for the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, usable segment five for the Office of Public Works.
Do we have a motion?
Move to debate.
Second.
Second.
Moved in seconded for debate, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2021-006, an ordinance authorizing a contract with RA Homes LLC for the purchase of real estate located 1126 North 10th Street in an amount of $42,630 in closing costs and an amount of $2,000 for a total amount not to exceed $44,630 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, usable segment six for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Moved in seconded for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Present.
Noted.
I'm a present on that one, thank you.
Noted. 2021...
Okay, ayes have it, consent, thank you.
2021-007, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad UP for preliminary engineering services for the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works.
Do we have a motion?
Move for consent.
Move for consent.
Second.
Moved in seconded for consent, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Finance, 2021-008, an ordinance authorizing execution of a one-year contract extension of RFP number CS18-15 with Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus LLP to perform city annual audit for the fiscal year 2021 from February 28th, 2020 through February 28th, 2021 for an amount not to exceed $141,525 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move for consent.
Second.
Moved in seconded for consent, is there any discussion?
Chair, this is Jim Donilon with a question.
Sure, go ahead, Donilon.
Could somebody just tell me how many years we've used this firm for our annual audit? And if nobody on the line can tell me that next week, that'd be great.
Hi, this is Bill McCarty. Yeah, we've used him, I think, three years now, and we have two extensions. We are gonna be doing an RFP. We typically use an audit firm every, change every four or five years. That's been the standard, and we want to continue doing that. Baker Tilly's done a very good job for us, and given the fact that we are starting with a new chief accountant, especially at the utility, next week, having that continuity and that knowledge is really important right now. So Ramona Mesker, who's our comptroller, thought it best to continue on with Baker Tilly for at least one more extension, and then we'll, we'll do an RFP, certainly no longer than five years out.
Sounds reasonable, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Donilon, are there any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
General City Business, 2021-009, a resolution allocating 2021 bond volume cap.
Move for consent.
Second.
Moved in seconded for consent, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, Alderman Proctor with a question.
Yes, go ahead, Alderman Proctor.
This is my annual question on this resolution. What do we plan to do, if anything, with the $12,616,340? I guess that'd be to... Account development, or the mayor's office, or... Just if there's a plan, because I know that there are other cities that are doing things, creative things with this volume cap, such as mortgage assistance, you know, for purchasing of homes and stuff, and just wondering if we have any plans for that as well.
Mayor, would you...
Well, I don't know if Director Yazil's on the line. That's, if not, we can find out if there's any projects in the hopper. But like you said, Alderman Proctor, it's geared towards housing projects in particular. So we'll get that updated if there's anything of significance. But I'm sure there's some areas of interest, especially for the Enos Park area or the east side, where the housing need is greatest. Mentioned downtown, too.
Yeah, no fear about downtown, so we'll get it answered next week?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So do you want to keep this on the consent agenda, Alderman Proctor?
I can't remember who made the motion, but if they're open to it, I'd put on debate.
I'll withdraw my consent and move to debate.
That was a second, so second on debate.
Thank you, okay, so moving this one to debate, are there any other questions right now? We will ask them on next week. All those in favor of debate?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2021-010, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of execution of a one-year lease agreement between the city of Springfield and Central Illinois Stamp Creek Corporation for the use of a portion of the building located at 1010 East Edward Street for a period of January 6, 2021 through January 5, 2022 related to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in the second for consent, I see Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So is this, doesn't, I, I don't see a price on this. Is this just we're letting them use the building?
Hi, Alderwoman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so we have to pay for the Uniform, for the Uniform Relocation Act anyway. So actually, we would, we would have to, we have to pay the money regardless. So there's actually, there's no money for the lease. We're just gonna let them stay, and it actually saves us up to $50,000 in relocation cost.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, since Alderwoman DeSensio has asked my question, are there any other questions for this ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2021-011, an ordinance authorizing a development agreement with the Springfield Park District for improvements in the Enes Park Tax Increment Financing District and the Madison Park Place Tax Increment Financing District for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for debate.
Second.
Moved in seconded for debate, do we have questions for tonight? Alderwoman Turner?
I have a couple of questions. So it seems like that we are agreeing to return a little over $650,000 to the Park District if they will give us a letter of support for the extension of the TIF. So, and that money is supposed to go for improvements to parks, property within the TIF district, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so I, I guess I would ask, what parks are located within that TIF district? Because it's my recollection, there's only two, and they're very, very small. So I'm just really not sure what, what improvements they would do for almost $700,000 to those two very small parks.
We could certainly ask them what their, what specific plans are. You may recall, this, this is contingent on the TIF districts being extended. There's a discussion about expanding the, potentially the boundary of the SHA Madison Park TIF area.
I know, but it's my understanding that, that the, not to cut you off, but it's my understanding that the request for the, the TIF expansion would only, that's going before the General Assembly now, would only be for Enos Park. And there was a request that the Madison Park Place TIF be excluded from that, from that request. So I think if we're only talking about this $655,000 just for Enos Park, I would definitely need to know what the plans are for that money. I mean, there's, there's German Park and Enos Park, those are the only two that I'm familiar with. And so I, and, and they're both very small parks. And it just seems like that's an awful lot of money for us to give them for a commitment to be spent in those two very small areas. So if we could find out what the expectation is for that funding, that would be great. And then, and then the other question I have is, I know that there was an additional assurance given to the Park District that, that there would be a reimbursement of the funds that were expended for the roof on Municipal Center East. So how much is that, how much was that expenditure? And how much will that be in addition to this $655,000?
Yeah, the, just to go back though to answer, try to answer your question. The agreement provides for their approval for both extensions. They may end up legislatively being in two different bills. That's not clear yet on how that'll happen. Most of the other taxing bodies have already given letters for both TIF areas, with the exception of the county and also the township. So we, the city has already letters from the, several of the other taxing bodies for both, and that was just following that pattern with the Park District. The funding, my memory is the funding between the two, I think the Enos Park portion of that is about 400. I think the remaining 200 is the Madison Park contingent on both of those being extended. And in terms of the process, you have to remember that those monies, if the TIFs are not renewed, they're gonna get that money anyway, it's just spread over 12 years. So
Right.
the process here was to try to allow them to be able to have enough money to do some larger capital projects. However, we can ask them if they have plans in place yet for that. But the 600 was actually divided between the two TIF areas, if, if that's of some help.
And I don't think there's any parks in the Madison Park Place TIF. So, I mean, I just, I understand, I understand what's, what's happening here that, you know, that we're trying to get this letter of support by any means necessary. But I just think that we have to be, we should be realistic and upfront about that. And, and what, what is the return, what is the return for this money that we're expending? So if we could just get that information from the Park District, that would be great. And then, how much, how much is the reimbursement for the roof?
Well, that's not part of this discussion or agreement with them. I think the policy question, I think, had been talked about, I think, two or three times in front of the council, I think with the mayor, about whether or not it would be appropriate to reimburse the TIF. However, that's not part of this, you know, that's not contemplated in the...
I understand it's not part of this ordinance, but I do understand that it has been part of the discussion that was predicated with the Park District on considering this. So I guess, so that's why I'm asking the question, because I think that in order to be transparent, we would need to add that amount on to this $655,000. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, that's, that is not a condition of their letter, at least that I'm aware of.
I've said that three times. I understand it's not a condition of the letter, but I also understand that it was a discussion that was, that predicated this ordinance. So if I could just have the amount that was spent on the roof, and then we could add, then for my own personal figures, I want to add that to the $655,000.
Madam Chair, could I respond?
Is that Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah.
Alderman Hanauer, if you have the amount, then you can respond. I'm looking for an amount.
Well, I know that we, we approved, I, I want to say up to $750,000 for the cost of the roof. I don't know that we ever saw what the actual cost of the roof is.
That's why, and that's why I'm asking the question.
$760,000.
Thank you. So that would be $760,000 added on to the $655, and we're gonna get addition, upgrades to two very small parks. It just seems like a, I don't know, it just seems odd to me.
If I may, Madam Chair, to add clarification?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
We did talk to the Park District about that concern, and what the amendment is, it would state with any capital improvement within the area, if there's excess funds, then that would be, could be used in a, another TIF district park property for our agreement.
So can we have that amendment included in this? Can we have an amendment for next week that would be, that would put that, make that part of this ordinance?
Correct. And if I could further clarify the roof, what I had told them that I bring, I think I mentioned to the council that I'd be bringing an ordinance with reimbursement from the respective fund that it came out of for the roof repair and put it back into the downtown TIF. As everybody should remember, maybe not, at that point in time, the downtown TIF was healthy where the, the other fund that we were allocating the funds from was not. So now the roles are reversed, so that's why I'd bring that forward.
Okay, I think, if I could just ask for a little clarification on what Alderman, Alderwoman Turner was pointing out here, in, in terms of her request for this, this amendment. And then Alderman McMenamin, I do see you, and we'll get, and we'll get you next. Could we please have a list of the parks that are covered by TIF districts that would also be eligible for funding from this $600,000, should there be leftovers? If that could be included as part of the language that is brought for, brought to us next week?
Sure can.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Alderman McMenamin?
I think, I think we should all be very concerned about what the Park District is doing here. I think it reflects a very uncooperative attitude. I think it's a very self-serving approach to our effort at the city to improve our neighborhoods, especially the neighborhoods that need help. And what the Park District is doing is, is saying, okay, we're gonna strong-arm you, city, and we won't let you improve your city unless you give us some of the money. And I think if we set this precedent, who knows what other local jurisdiction will have the same approach? It could be the Airport Authority, it could be the, the Township, it could be Lincoln Lane Community College, it could be any of them can strong-arm the city like this. And what's particularly disturbing is that we got a former Alderman on the Park District, and I don't know, it, it seemed that from prior conversations, his hand may have been involved in this to some extent. I think, I'm very disappointed in what's happening at the Park District. And, you know, when you think about it, the tax increment financing districts and the, the, the strategy of TIFs is to lift up every boat, because what we're trying to do is invest in these districts so that the property values throughout go up. And when the properties go up, that benefits the Park District. And so it just seems very unfortunate that our own Park District and their leadership has taken this approach to the city. And I hope all of us communicate our disappointment to the elected Park Board members. And I don't know what our response should be as a city, but I don't like this approach by the Park District at all, taking $600,000 from the, this TIF district that needs all the help it can get, including the $600,000. And this has been pointed out, if they were gonna do something useful with the $600,000... And this has been pointed out, if they were going to do something useful with the $600,000, that'd be one thing, but we've got two micro parks there, and there's a limit that what can be done to those micro parks. So let's think this through, Mr. Mayor and the others. I, I know that you, we want the extension of the TIF, but we don't want to be treated this way when we do so. That's all I got.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Alderman Hanauer.
Does anyone know what the projection of the, the amount Enos Park will, will generate, Enos Park TIF would generate if it does get extended?
Yeah, go ahead. It should be approximately 6 million.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Corporation Council, could you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. The question was, what was the projection?
Yes.
For the funds through the 12-year extension, approximately 6 million?
6 million, okay, thank you.
Based on the current, you know, current and current, you know, times 12.
If I could, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just to kind of reply to Alderman McMenamin's, and I think some others are wondering, with regards to the agreement with the Park District, this is a mutual agreement that we came up with. You know, as we're heading into our budget, as you can imagine with the property taxes, with the pandemic, I think, you know, the escalation of cost of doing business, when you're looking at the parks, and Alderman Proctor probably could speak to this, is that there's limited resources. So in actuality, what we're trying to do is partner with the Park District to get parks reinvested. Because we all know, we went through this with the Bicentennial Plaza that we, you know, we allocated TIF funds for, and we got bashed for that. And so even though green initiatives like this do help the area, that's sometimes met with skepticism. This is a way that two governing bodies can come together, meet on the forefront, move in this direction. And with regards to the properties that really need the help, aside from the parks that Alderwoman Turner spoke of, one is Robin Roberts Stadium, Chamberlain Park, Comer Cox, places like that. And so this gives us the opportunity to work together. And with regards to other taxing bodies, this is a unique situation where this taxing body actually has facilities within the areas we're trying to improve. So that's the difference. Unlike Capital Township, on the other hand, that's the one held, holding us for hostage. And going back to the, my statement with regards to not bringing both TIFs together, I intended to do that, but I did back off of that if they moved forward in the fall session, which never happened, or the fall session never happened, and then in the veto session, which never happened. So now that we have the spring session coming up, I intend to bring this forward through the legislature, talking to our local legislative leaders, to bring both of those in, because Enos Park needs it. But what needs it worse is definitely the extension Madison Park Place that would take in the Pillsbury area, which is probably one of our most dilapidated neighborhoods within this city. So the intent is to bring them both forward because they both need the help. But in unison, working with the Park District, I think it's going to be a win-win. I think there needs to be definitely clarification on what the intended purpose are with the funds that's been requested by Alderwoman Turner, and then what's been brought up by all of you, and move forward with a clearer picture of what is going to transpire through the agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman McMenamin?
That's a good explanation, Mr. Mayor, and it's helpful. I think this raises some broader issues, though, with the Park District, even broader than, than what we're discussing here, because when you look at the Park District infrastructure, they've got these massive parks on the periphery of Springfield, just massive parks that are maintenance expensive, infrastructure expensive, and then we've got the, some of the smaller parks. And I like the idea of investing in the smaller parks, but you know, what they're doing is instead of taking their own taxing authority and their own monies to do it, again, there's, they're taking from the city, in effect, 10% of the TIF money is what I think we're learned, is that if we, the TIF will generate 6 million over the next so many years, they're going to get 600,000, which is 1/10th. So I understand the logic of trying to encourage improvements in our more inner-city parks. I still question the, I still question the way we've gone about it, but I completely understand some of the logic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Turner?
What, what is the schedule of the disbursement of these funds if this passes?
The, it would be dispersed upfront if the TIF districts are extended.
So it, so it wouldn't be over the life of the TIF, we would give them that money upfront?
That is correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on this, this ordinance?
Madam Chair, Andrew Proctor here.
Yeah, Andrew, Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, Joe, well, Alderman McMenamin kind of responded to what he's brought up. Yeah, I, I agree with him, I'm kind of disappointed with how the Park District handled this, and this is the way it worked out. But to my understanding, these conversations happen all the time when TIF districts are extended normally. So I think that's how the county is getting like a million dollars or whatever each year for the downtown TIF, whatever. So these conversations that city involves with other taxing districts to extend these TIFs isn't new. But I agree with you, I kind of am disappointed with how the Park District handled this one. And in regards to the two parks located in the TIF district, Enos Park, I can attest that they are neglected. Each time I visit them, there'd be broken playground equipment, broken lighting, broken fences, trees, landscaping needed to take care of, and it wasn't done. So I think, you know, it's good that we were able to, you know, target this money for, you know, the parks, but again, I'm disappointed with the Park District how it, how it came about, and especially them waiting out until the last minute too, because they, of all the taxing values, they kind of waited near the end as well.
Thank you, Alderman Proctor. Do we have any other questions to this issue? Mayor, then I have an additional question. Have you explored the option of, instead of releasing all of the funds to the Park District at once upfront, doing it on more of a per-project basis?
Yeah, actually, Corporation Council and I were discussing that very thing, of the belief of paying the project, you know, not directly to the Park District, but paying for the project as it's brought forward. So we'll have those discussions with them prior to next Tuesday to kind of
Thank you.
finalize that. And then the other item, real quick, just for clarification on Madison Park Place, that brings in, over the course of the timeframe, Corporation Council?
Well, the, there's, remember
It's not just 6 million, it's 6 million plus the Madison Park Place.
Right, which is an approximately, an additional number of 3 million. So the, the thought process is to have them both extended, and then of course, extend the boundaries for Madison.
Thank you. Alderwoman Turner?
So, so how would we handle this if, because again, I go back to, I was told that these will not be handled together, they will, they could be handled separately. So if in fact that happens, and how would, how would this disbursement be handled? If we're making, if we're making the agreement based on the expansion of both TIFs, and if only one is expanded, what does that do, what effect does that have on the amount of the payment and how it's dispersed?
Well, if it, it is tied individually, the agreement provides that the individual TIF districts are separate. So if, for example, Enos Park were extended but Madison was not, then they will only get the portion that is related to Enos Park.
And how much is that?
Approximately 400,000.
Okay.
Corporation Council, I would ask again to kind of maybe follow up on what Alderwoman Turner is pointing out here. If we could have those dollar amounts linked to the specific TIFs included in the agreement so that it's very clear how much goes with, with which TIF, that I would appreciate that in the agreement for next week.
Yes, it's actually in the development agreement that's attached to the ordinance. However, we can, we did prepare an amendment this afternoon, I think at the request of Alderman Gregory, that was to clarify that, I think that was addressing some of the questions. It's been circulated, but it was very late because we just, the mayor just talked to Alderman Gregory this afternoon, very late. But it does provide, if there are any unspent funds in either TIF area, then those could be used in other TIF areas, you know, other parks, with the city's approval. So it's trying to give a little bit of flexibility so that if there were insufficient projects, you know, within the Enos Park or Madison Park, then the could request that it be used in other adjoining TIF areas, but with the city's approval. And that was to provide some flexibility in the event that there were, you know, not projects that maybe they didn't cost as much as they originally thought and that sort of thing.
Okay, but my question was that we, I want to do, want to make sure that it's very clearly stated, not just in the developers agreement, but specifically spelled out in the ordinance, that if these two TIFs go forward and one doesn't pass, that we have those exact amounts agreed upon so that the Park District, that both bodies are aware of our, our commitments?
Well, we can amend the ordinance and take it out of the development agreement and put it into the ordinance.
Thank you, yes.
But the parties, I was going to say, the parties, very clearly, that's where the precise number came from, adding the two together.
Thank you.
But we can certainly do that, or add it as an appendix, yes.
Thank you. Alderwoman Turner?
So is there, when you talk about any, any funds that are not spent in Enos Park, is there a timeframe on that, or is it the 12 years, or, so would they have 12 years in order to spend this $400,000? Or, I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm confused, I'm just trying to understand.
No, no, there's no, there's no specific time limit. Right now, the, if the, if the TIF is not renewed, they would end up getting the same amount of money, however, it would be spread over 12 years. So there's not a spending time limit of when they must spend the 600. There's not a, you know, specific, it must be done within a year, or, you know, something of that nature.
So we could, so we could, so we could actually give, give them a check for $655,000 and wait 12 years to see if there's any work done or any improvements made?
I think that we're not, we have not said when they have to spend it. It is my understanding that they believe they have a lot of requirements, but we have not tried to say when they should spend it. And we could certainly ask them what the schedule is. I think you had asked for, do they have a list of the projects they can do? And we can find out both the list of projects and when do they intend to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I just want to be clear, too, this payment that we would be making, what fund would that come from?
Would, would come from the TIF fund.
So are we saying that the TIF funds for like Enos Park, that's $400,000, but we're now going to authorize that to be spent in an area outside of the Enos TIF boundaries? If they don't spend it all within the, the boundaries on the Enos Park?
The, the city has that authority.
So the, the city can use TIF funds to pay for projects outside of the TIF boundaries?
No, by porting. I think Alderman Andrews is familiar with that, being able to spend money together. For example, the YMCA is an example, you know, funds from the downtown TIF is actually being spent within the Enos Park, the Y is actually located in Enos Park, but we're allowed by state law to do what's called
Okay, so we would just, that's where it would just be spent within other parks that are entirely within a TIF district?
Subject to city approval.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Turner?
My last question, I promise.
I will hold you to that.
What, what fund is the reimbursement for the roof coming from?
Yeah, Director McCarty can answer that, whoever it went to originally.
And to make clear, that would have to be a separate ordinance. That's not part of this, there would have to be a separate ordinance addressing any kind of a transfer, you know, fund transfer. So the, I don't recall myself, and I don't know if Director McCarty's on the line, but that would be up again to the city council to decide an appropriate place, how to transfer the funds, or, and I'm not sure where they came from, if they came from infrastructure or corporate or whichever, I just don't recall. But that would be a matter of a separate ordinance, you know, to be voted on.
I, I understand it would be a separate ordinance, but if we're, obviously there have been discussions about reimbursement, reimbursing this money, so I would imagine that if those discussions have been occurring, there would be, also be some discussion on where the money would come from. Maybe not.
Yeah, the options would be, of course, corporate fund or infrastructure, the appropriate fund. I can't recall where, that was probably three or four years ago, the original budget process, but we'd go back and take a look at that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Anyone besides Alderwoman Turner have any additional questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second for debate for this ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-012, an ordinance to increase the number of Class A local licenses by one for RevCor LLC doing businesses located at 411 East Washington Street.
Motion for consent, second.
Second.
Moved and seconded for consent, are there, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes with one present, seeing no nays, we will move on to unfinished business.
Madam Chair, you have a question from Alderman Redpath?
Oh, thank you very much. I would not want to miss Alderman Redpath.
I was just going to ask if this is a one o'clock license or something?
But he's going to have to turn his mic on or something.
Thank you.
One o'clock.
He was asking if it was a one o'clock license, and it was confirmed that it was.
Okay. I'm going to still hold that this is on consent agenda, Alderman, sorry for missing your question. So we can now move on to unfinished business before the council tonight. Does anyone have any unfinished business to bring up? Alderman McMenamin? You are still muted, Alderman.
Several constituents have communicated regarding the, the vaccine, vaccination process and communications. I've explained that the city doesn't have oversight or control over the county health department, but what I'm hearing is a continuing problem with accurate information and so forth. I realize they've got a real difficult implementation of the vaccine distribution with quantity so unpredictable and timeline of deliveries unpredictable and so forth. I think it would be helpful if at some point in time, Gail O'Neil would come to the city council and describe to us the vaccination personnel and the methods they will have to inform our citizens regarding who is qualified when and how to get the vaccine. There's been lots of discussion about, some people are 55 and getting reservations or appointments, and some people are 60, 75, and 85, and it's all over the map as far as who's getting the appoint, the appointments. And, and there's a lot of dissatisfied, unhappy folks out there that can't seem to get a consistent answer about how they go about getting their appointment. And, and so we need good information from the county health department, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Alderman. I will add to that, that I have also gotten a lot of questions and concerns about the vaccine and its distribution. I do hope we have an increase in supply soon, and that will make some of this a little easier. I'll also say, though, it's very heartening that the demand is, outstrips the supply right now, and, and that is, that's a good thing that people are willing to step up and get this. So Alderwoman Turner?
I'm not Gail O'Neil, and I'm not trying to speak for the health department, but I will say that a lot of the confusion that we are experiencing in our community is from the fact that there are multiple sources of people accessing the fact that there are multiple sources of people accessing the vaccine. The county health department is only one port of entry. There's others, others that are, also have their supply and, and their, the way that they are putting that information out there. And then there's also, within each of those categories, there are people that are moved to the top of the list. So it's, it's confusing, but it's not all on, you know, the Segway County Health Department and the way that they're putting out their information. So, you know, there's, and that's, and that's unfortunate, but I'm hopeful, I have been told that in the next two weeks, that there will be, that there will be better information on the amount of vaccine that's coming and, and when it's coming, and that will certainly be a help.
Absolutely. Thank you, Alderwoman. Do we have any additional unfinished business at this time? Any in the councils, in the chambers? Hearing none, I will move to new business. Alderwoman Turner?
Yeah.
This is going to be your night tonight.
I know, and I, I apologize.
No, I don't apologize.
But I'm not, this, this may go to, one of the statements that Alderman Hanauer said earlier, I don't know if Doug Brown is able to discuss this or not, but I know that we have been getting some concerns from residents that live in an area of Ward Three that used to be Ward One, and so I'm quite sure that Alderman Redpath has been getting a lot of this, too, about the relocation of ash ponds. There was some information out that was going to negatively impact some of the homeowners in that, in that area off of West Lake Drive. So, and I know that Doug Brown gave us a very detailed explanation by email, and I appreciate that. So any information that you can share for the public would be greatly appreciated.
Well, we, yeah, we received, basically, an email sharing some concerns of, of one of the homeowners that are near the area. So essentially, the ash ponds are not being relocated, they will be closed. The lime, the lime ponds, however, have to be relocated because of the regulations of the, in order to close the ash ponds. So therefore, we're moving them probably about 300 feet northeast of that. So it's essentially like a 70-acre site that is there currently, and with the lime ponds, the new lime ponds, once the ash ponds are closed, the new pond, lime ponds that are there, it'll be about five acres. And on the east side, they'll be surrounded by a berm and trees, they'll be pushed back away from Stevenson Drive. There's an entrance that's shared with the homeowner in question that was actually concerned about it. We share an entrance for our PMC annex property and that resident, and we'll be moving that entrance, we'll be closing that entrance and moving it down to where the ash pond entrance is. So that way, we take all the traffic that's there now to their, in front of their home, and moving it down further. So the aesthetics will greatly, greatly improve, I believe, in, in that area once we're done, you know, and the traffic and for the ash ponds, once they're closed, will be greatly reduced as well.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, Alderman Redpath.
So Doug, how far set back are these from the homes that are sitting on Greencastle? That's where Alderman Turner's talking about, the Greencastle neighborhood there.
I don't really have that information with me right now. I mean, the lime pond, the new lime pond would be closer to those homes, but again, they're, they would be completely separated by trees and a, and a berm as well, to make sure that, you know, sound and, and, you know, the, the general sight of that area is, is basically blocked from view.
So have we, have we done a environmental study on if there's going to be, they're, they're worried about chemical impact of some kind, of some kind of leakage or everything?
Well, and these aren't, these are not ash ponds, so the, there is a totally different dynamic. Lime ponds, you see them sometimes, often in the middle of cities, it's part of the water purification process. We take basically the lime, we take it out and we, they actually redistribute to farm fields. Some people use it, you know, to, it basically breaks up soil.
So these aren't ash ponds?
These are not ash ponds.
That's what the confusion is, I think.
That's correct, I think so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other questions for, for Doug Brown at this time?
Madam Chair, Alderman Gregory.
Yes, Alderman Gregory.
She said something about, in the email, about dusty roads and, and, and it really causing, you know, some dust. Is there, is there anything we could, you know, if this was the?
Well, that's the ash ponds, essentially. The lime ponds do not do that, it's, there is, it's a, I guess you say, it's, the, the material's moist, and it stays that way, pretty much. The ash ponds are, are the issue that creates dust. As they move material or they load it on the trucks, it creates a dust issue. But when we close those, they'll be capped completely, I mean, you know, it's, it's, there won't, there won't be a dust issue like that.
So the road that we share going in and out, is it a paved road, rock road?
I believe it's a rocked road.
Rocked road, mhm. All right, thank you.
But now, that, that issue does not have hauling trucks on it, it just has other CBLP trucks or employees that go there.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory. Any other questions? Alderwoman Turner, just want to make sure, checking in. Thank you. Do we have any other new business to come before the council tonight? Hearing none, I'm going to give you one last chance, okay? We, as I understand, clerk, we have two peoples currently signed up to address the council tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, are they in chambers, or are they on the phone with us?
They, one is in chambers for sure, and that's Sam Arnold Hakim.
Okay, and Sam, I did get your name first, as having signed up, so I will set my timer, you have five minutes. Come to the podium to address the council.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, sir. Can I just ask, maybe just make sure you're talking, speaking into the microphone? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, Alderman, Mayor, for allowing me to be here this evening to What I'm concerned is with the 20, with the Sixth Street project, rail project, okay? Now, my niece, she owns a home at 2300 South Six. I'm here, I have a letter from right here that I want to read to you. This letter is regarding 2300 South Sixth Street in Springfield, Illinois, 62703. I can't be in tonight's meeting, I am quarantined. My name is Gina Siler. I'm having Sam Arnold, AKA Lukeman Hakim, here on my behalf because of me being quarantined. When all this rail project started, I never thought anything of it. Once my mom started complaining of her nook starting to have problems, I still didn't think anything. Finally, I decided to go see what she was talking about. When I seen it, I couldn't believe that this was due to anything but the rail project. I had no clue where to even begin. I called Brendan Moore, which he interviewed me, and it never went anywhere from there. I started asking around and spoke to one of my clients that said, called Mr. Jimmy Austin at Hanson Engineering. Mr. Austin and another gentleman came out on a couple occasions and took pictures. I also got ahold of my Alderman, Christian DeCenso. She said us people have been coming out of the woodwork. So with the back and forth between Mr. Austin and the Alder Lady, we still have no answers, except, don't put any money into it because we won't be reimbursing you. My mom has lived at this residence for 13 years and it never had structural issues. She has had failing health since all this started. Since all this rail, I've had to replace a sewer line, a furnace, we had to, had to clean up the flooded basement that took out all my mom's flea market things and had to throw them away from the water damage. My foundation is horribly cracked, which I'm pretty sure each and every Alderman's got pictures. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir. I believe that we do.
Okay, thank you. My foundation is horribly cracked to where you can see daylight. We've had to reframe windows on the north side of the house because the pounding has knocked them loose. I am now replacing the whole kitchen nook because the ceiling fell in the nook. All the damage to houses on the north side where all this pounding work has been going on. So my questions are, how long is one supposed to wait before they can make their home livable? Why was my tree cut out front to help fit the rail where it's supposed to go, but nobody thought to get ahold of us for the rail being so close to my house? Why was we never contacted by anyone about possibly a buyout or just fixing it? I would gladly let any one of you Aldermen and the Mayor the chance to come look for yourself. You look and be for the judge. That's what my niece wants, wants to know.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Alderwoman DeCenso?
Yes, Mr. Arnold, I was in contact with your niece, and my comments were not meant in a derogatory fashion at all. Anyone on this council and the general public knows that I have been an advocate for people like your niece and homes along the Sixth Street corridor, because this has been a nightmare. And that's why I voted present on one of these tonight, because I agree with you that this should have been taken care of before anything else happened. Your niece's response to me was she was working with Director Bottom and Jimmy Austin. I actually emailed you this week and didn't get a response back, so...
I have not received that email.
I, I have it. You might want to check your emails or check your spam because it's not probably a normal email address that you get emails from. But I, I don't have, I don't have, if it were up to me, you'd be bought out. If it were up to me, all those houses would be bought out, but it's not up to me. As, as, like I said, anyone on this council can tell you that I have advocated for people like your niece, and I, I've been on your side. So it's a little offensive to me that someone is saying that I haven't been on their side. I think everyone up here can tell you that I have fought this battle for months and months and months. So this is up to the city and, which means Public Works and Hanson Engineering at this point. There is a Federal Rail Administration guideline that says if you aren't 100 feet from the rail, then you didn't get bought out. I do not agree with the way people weren't notified, I don't agree with it at all. But that was before my time on the council. It's to my knowledge that it started early in 2016, 2017, so I, I can't help what I can't help, but I, I can't help what I can't help.
Yes, ma'am. Now, I understand, and it's very, it's going to be awful close, that we are within 100 feet of that rail.
I, I don't know that. I've walked that whole area from Ninth Street all the way over to Fourth in Burton. I have, I have been a part of that entire, I've been over there several times. I've been at people's homes, in their backyards, their sidewalks, I've seen the whole disaster that it is. So I have been very vocal about this on this council. I don't know if it's within 100 feet or not, that would be, Public Works would know that, or Hanson would know that, but I don't know that. And if it were, if it were within 100 feet, then you would have qualified for the Federal Rail Administration buyout.
If we could, Director Bottoms is on the line, if we could have an update from him?
If, if I may comment just one thing right quick. My niece...
Okay, yes.
Okay, my niece, and I apologize if Mr. DeCenso, if you misinterpreted what I said about that she was against us, okay? Because my niece didn't, did not, maybe I, I said it wrong, because she said us people, you know, haven't been coming out of woodwork, so with the back and forth between Mr. Austin and Alder Lady, we still have no answers. We didn't mean that you wasn't on our side. We appreciate all the help we can get, even from Ward Three to Ward One, to, anybody could help us out in this situation. We cannot just keep living like this. Now, this is crazy. I mean, I know for a fact that if any one of yous was in this house, owned this house, I know yous would not live like this. And my sister, she's, she's 75, 80 years old, she cannot live in this condition. Her health right now is very severely limited. You know, that's the reason why I'm here to help try to resolve this issue.
And just, just so you know, this council has voted on two homes, to, to, to purchase two homes that were not supposed to be purchased, but this council voted to purchase those two homes that were in situations like yours. Now, it's my understanding from Director Bottom that no additional homes will be purchased, but that repairs will be made. So if Director Bottom is on the line, then we should hear from him.
I, I see he has unmuted at least once, so Director, if you have a moment, please? And you are still mute right now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, there was one more home to be bought, and that was the Painter Home over on 409 East Isles Avenue after further evaluation and, and receiving justification, which that one will be coming before you. And then Jimmy Austin and Hanson has been out and assessed the site, and then the contractors that we've been using to give us estimates are scheduled to go to this property on, on Thursday at 2:00 in order to assess the damage and give us a quote for repairs for, for the property.
Okay, thank you. Sir, if I can ask, if you have a copy of your niece's email that you can maybe leave with the clerks, so we can make sure that it's, it's, it's put in with our record, I would, I would appreciate that.
I, I think my niece will be able to, to text it to me before we leave.
Okay, wonderful. Or, or if you need to, you could have, either you or have your niece email that to, to your Alder Woman, I'm sure she will make it part of the record also.
Okay, she just texted me and said she'll send it to me.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and then Alderman McMenamin.
I just want to make sure Mr. Arnold understands that Hanson or the contractors are going to go in and ask to survey the area, you know, damage, things of that nature, and then they will, that's our process. We send them in, they'll assess it, and then come back with a recommendation, and then after that, that's when we'll make a decision on how to proceed.
Okay, now, I have a slight demonstration I want to show yous if I can, if I can get somebody to move this table up here so I can show yous.
Sir, you, you have used your five minutes. Can I ask what sort of a presentation you're planning?
Well, the demolition and the pounding of the rail system, putting it in, and the demolition of the street to put the concrete wall in, I was going to demonstrate the closeness of what it would be like with the glass of water, so that way you can see the difference. The longer the way from the, the house is, it doesn't get the vibration. I've even asked for vibration meters. I've even asked for vibration meters from Hanson and from the city both. No vibration meters was brought to the house.
I, I think, sir, we'll real quickly take Alderman McMenamin's question, I don't know them. I'll ask leave of the council if you want to see an additional demonstration. I, I will tell you, I think I can, certainly the visual helps, but let's, Alderman McMenamin?
Madam Chair, my, Madam Chair, my topic was a new topic unrelated to the, to the gentleman's serious concerns.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question on this topic, if you don't mind?
Sure, Alderman Proctor, please go ahead. Just real quickly, Alderman McMenamin, we are in citizen comments, so I didn't know, circle back to? Alderman McMenamin?
I'll let Alderman Proctor proceed, and then I'll ask your approval to bring up another topic.
Okay, Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, just a quick question to Director Bottom in relation to this. It was mentioned in previous conversation, I think, for a house to be eligible, it had to be with 100 feet of the project. Is, is that true? And then B, is it based on property line distance to the project versus actual physical location of the house?
I'm not familiar, familiar with the 100-foot regulation that was brought up. The purchases along the rail were associated with right away we needed an order to construct the project, so if we, if we touched the property and we're substantially damaging it, and we needed to buy the entire property, then, then we would do it at that time.
Then, is there like a determination?
I'll double check and I'll verify with Hanson Engineers and the environmental, Kevin Seal's environmental lead for the project on the 100 feet.
And can you also ask, when you're talking to Hanson, if, why this property wasn't considered for acquisition in the first place? Because I just do a quick little Google Maps distance search, and it's like 80 feet from the project, from the project, it looks like. So if it, if there's a 100-feet window there, I think that more than qualifies, but I'm just curious of, if they had a determination written down or whatever, why this property didn't qualify, that'd be helpful.
Director, will we, will we have that determination, that information back?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, sorry, I'll mute, we'll get, we'll get that for you.
I, I thought you might be muted, thank you, sir. So going back to the question at hand, I, I think, you know, we, sir, actually, I looked at my timer, you did have another 30 seconds. When you finish your comments, if you'd like to take your last 30 seconds for your demonstration, please go right ahead.
Alright, thank you. Now, let's say this is Sixth Street. This is Princeton. And right here is the, the new rail system coming in. Now, before all this happened, the land was settled evenly. And when they started pounding, what's that water doing? It's vibrating. Now, that's vibrating the house, it's vibrating the sewer lines. It's cracking things, it's damaging, it's dropping ceilings, ceilings down. When Jimmy Hanson and his daughter came out, he, they looked at the house, they took pictures. There was no damage in the, in the bedroom areas, period. After they started pounding again, there was more cracks in the walls, there's more cracks around the windows. And I called Jimmy on several different occasions, and I told him, and he told me to take pictures and send them to him.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. And it sounds like we're, we're going to get some more information on your case from, from the Director of Public Works, and you have Alderman De Senso very much on the standby to follow up with this. So thank you for coming in tonight and speaking on behalf of your family, we appreciate your, your time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
If the building, if it's within 10 feet of the building, it needs to be purchased, not 100, but obviously that's extremely close.
Okay, thank, thank you, thank you very much, that, that is different, but...
You all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Director Bottom, I was told by, that the fail, the Federal Rail Administration guidelines were 100 feet.
That's just what the land act specialist said, and I just called him real quick, but I'm gonna get something in writing from Hanson Professional Services, and I'll provide it to all the Aldermen.
Thank you very much. Alderman McMenamin, you had something you wanted to bring up now?
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll wait till next week, given that the time, so we can have as much time as possible for the budget, thank you.
Thank you very much. Clerk, we had one more person, is that correct, signed up to speak?
Yes, John Keating.
And is Mr. Keating online or in chambers?
He is in, he's in the council chambers, he'll be here in just a second.
Thank you, guys, it's strange...
Okay, sorry, just to admit, Mr. Keating, if you can, also state your name. For the record, I will start my timer when that goes off, that will be your five minutes, okay?
Alright, my name is John Keating, I'm a resident here in Springfield and an advocate. Alderman Proctor, I like your mask, it's surprising that you're wearing that, but I wish I had the guts for that one. And I appreciate that you and Alderman De Senso are empathizing with Sam's case, because I've spoken to a number of families in the community that are also affected by similar situations. The reason that I am here this evening, I've had a number of folks reach out to me, and it's been something that's been discussed over the past few months, is the decals on the Springfield police vehicles. There are the Thin Blue Line flags, but more pertinent is the Thin Blue Line cross. The Brewster County in Texas was sued and settled in 2016 by the Freedom From, Freedom From Religion Foundation, because having a cross on a government-owned vehicle is generally a violation. And I completely empathize, or understand that I can't empathize with what it's like to be a police officer. I understand that they need a symbol of unity, because it's not something that any of us go through, but we also can't control how symbols are used and how they evolve. Just because it was began for one thing, doesn't mean that it hasn't been co-opted by political extremists over the last few years, and now means something completely different to a lot of our citizens. The Thin Blue Line itself, at this point, is an us-against-them mentality, at least, that's how it's viewed by quite a few folks. And when we're moving towards more community policing, more community relations with the law enforcement here in town, I don't think the image that we want to send is that it's an us-against-them, because that's not how any of this is gonna work to move forward. And nobody looks at, and I'm not comparing these symbols and their ideology directly whatsoever, but nobody looks at a swastika and sees the Sanskrit for well-being. Things evolve over time, and we need to be cognizant of that fact and the image that we're portraying. I don't, and a number of other folks here in the city, don't think it's proper to have something that is now viewed, even though it didn't start that way, as a political symbol on our municipally-owned vehicles. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
I'll talk to you after.
Sure.
You guys have a good evening.
Thank you, you have a nice night. Do we have anyone else who signed up to speak tonight?
Madam Chair, this is Assistant Chief Scarlett, can I just speak on that behalf real quick?
Yes, please.
Good afternoon or good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to speak on the topic of the Thin Blue Line. I think it's important that we understand the history associated with that, and Mr. Keating brings up some very good points that I want to touch on. The flag itself, or the Thin Blue Line itself, was created in 1911 as part of some army individuals because they wore blue uniforms. It was introduced in law enforcement in 1950s by the LA Police Chief, Chief Parker. His aspiration was to symbolize a unit of law enforcement who be entitled to the Thin Blue Line to protect the citizens from crime and the criminal element. The color blue comes from the uniforms that most municipalities wear. This Thin Blue Line has become symbolic in our profession as a tribute to those who've lost their lives sacrificing in the line of duty. In fact, our mourning bands that we wear when we recognize those that have died in the line of duty is a black band with a thin blue line between it. The item that we give the family of the fallen officers is a Thin Blue Line flag. I can't help the fact that, not only over the last couple of years, but specifically this past couple of weeks, that extremists chose to hijack that flag and walk it through the Capitol. And for that, I'm embarrassed that someone would even consider doing that. And that's exactly opposite of what law enforcement and that Thin Blue Line represents. The symbol in no way represents racism, or bigotry, or anything associated with hatred. In fact, it's now our job as law enforcement officers to overcome what happened here recently in the last couple of years. And beyond the Thin Blue Line, there's a Thin Green Line that represents military, there's a Thin Red Line that represents the fire department, and a yellow line for dispatchers, and so on. I think it's important that we, as a community, as law enforcement, as citizens of the community, as the council, we come together to understand one another's thoughts, understand the meaning and symbolism of this emblem, which is sacred to law enforcement. And I know the chief has discussed this with a handful of Aldermen and stakeholders in our community. And I think it's important that we recognize that law enforcement is made up of every race, every sex, every religion. And for those few hours that we spend on the clock protecting and serving the citizens of this Springfield, what we're known by is the patch and the badge, and that's, that's all we do. We respond to calls for service, it doesn't matter the race, the sex, the religion, anything else of the individual we're going to serve and protect. We have a duty and obligation, and we took an oath, and that's what we'll do. And that's what that Thin Blue Line represents. I'd be happy to answer any questions associated with that.
Chief, thank you very much for, for coming and speaking to this, I appreciate you taking the time. Do we have any questions tonight?
Madam Chair?
I, I, I'm sorry, is that Alderman Gregory?
Yes. I, I, I'd just like to say this, and I, I think it's important for us to, to, to really be careful around this subject and to, to really move forward. I, I, I did have a conversation, I, I think Alderman Turner has well, with Chief Winslow, with Deputy Chief Scarlett, about this, actually some time ago, before we had this. And with vacations and, and, and just some different things going on, I, I think, I think there's a conversation that needs to be had with, with some community members, with, with chiefs. So we all can gain an understanding, and, 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 and before we get all riled up about it. You know, I had some interesting conversations with some guys, with some, with some police officers, not something I do every day. And, and we had, we had, we had a good conversation, a frank conversation. It, it, it was, you know, I can't even repeat some of the things we talked about. But, you know, he had a pridefulness about his job, I had pridefulness about being a young black male. And, 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 and the things that we trying to overcome in our communities, and the things that policing are trying to come, overcome. They definitely know they, they, they've had some issues that, that, that really makes it hard to be a police officer, especially over this, this year and a half. And they definitely know that this council, this city, this mayor, I know those two do, expect high standards from them. So, so, you know, Mr. Keating, you know, I always talk with you, I appreciate you coming and bringing this up, I appreciate Ms. Smith putting this out. And I think it's an important conversation, it can't be a conversation that we're scared of, and, and it'll be alright, we'll have, we'll have a great conversation, and, you know, we'll, it's on the mayor and the chief and what they're gonna do, but I think after we have a, a great conversation, I think everybody can come to a, a, a great resolution, and we can move on as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory, I, I agree, I think we, we need to have a much better base of understanding. Deputy Chief Scarlett, thank you again for, for coming in and giving some history behind a symbol that has been really an important part of your, your organization. Do we have any other questions or comments at this time? Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not hearing anything from anyone.
I see no, no request.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming we do not have an executive session tonight, Corporation Council?
That, that is correct, ma'am.
Thank you, alright. I will accept a motion to adjourn the committee of the ball.
No move.
Second.
Move to second, and all those in favor, eyes have it. We will adjourn for five minutes before we reopen the, the council for our first budget hearing. I do just kind of have a housekeeping note, want to point out to everyone that we have been asked to give about one to two minutes between each presentation, so that we can ensure that we have the recordings of the, of the hearings done appropriately. So for now, we will take five minutes by my clock, I see 6:54, so 7:01, we will start back up. Thank you all very much. 7 o'clock, we make it 6 minutes.